Kyle, Anne, you want to kind of give us a little bit of a history of how we got to where we are?
Yeah, when we did it back in the survey, which was back in 2022, we did the parking survey.
The mic's off.
My mic is on? Okay, so one of the things that when we did the, we all took a part in it. Some of us did Elk Street, some did Pine Street, Owen Mountain, Spring Street, to look at this parking situation in all those areas. And one of the reasons we chose Spring Street is because we thought it would be the easiest to pilot. And also Bill Ott was on the city council at the time, he lived on Pine Street. Melissa was on city council, she and I both live on Elk Street. We didn't think those would be fair to do a street that one of a commissioner lived on versus one that they didn't. So when we sent out the surveys, we only actually got 10 surveys back on Spring Street. And I didn't realize until I was helping Kyle with the addresses that there were only 10 people that actually listed their house as being on Spring Street. Notices were sent to people in Allen, Texas, Watsonville, California, Blanchard, Oklahoma, Blue Eye, Missouri, Denver, Colorado, Fayetteville, Arkansas, Kansas City, Missouri, West Columbia, South Carolina, Yale, Oklahoma, Tampa, Florida, Holiday Island, which may be the reason we see so many out-of-state tags. I don't know if these people got letters or not. I don't know if they're residents or not. I don't know if they rent their houses tourist lodging. I have no idea. But I think that's the reason maybe some of them were not informed because we sent their mail to somewhere they don't get it, but yet they still have an out-of-state tag. But the problem came up with the multifamilies and with the bed and breakfast. And at the time, we did have one tourist lodging, the Pearl Tatman House, which is no longer a tourist lodging. It was a grandfather and they surpassed their 180 days. You know, to just briefly talk a little bit about the Bridgeford House. It's had numerous owners. From my understanding, it's just been the last two owners they've had issues with. One of the things a previous owner did was part of the problem, he had ghost tours. Well, they can't do that. He was called on that and he stopped. When the current owner bought the Bridgeford House, they advertised ghost tours. We sent him a letter, they stopped. I saw in the, I believe it was the Times Echo, where she held a reception for the daughters of the American Revolution. She doesn't live in the house. She lives in Holiday Island. This is a grandfather tourist lodging. There is no permitted use in R1 for special events, and she doesn't have a CUP for it. I don't know what the answer is, but it's a problem. We do have one multifamily there that's not an LNC and it doesn't have a CUP. And I know that she has been called, she has been sent a packet, and there's been no response to my knowledge. So I, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but I think we can come up with some kind of a solution.
Anne, do we know, since you're not answering emails, do we know who our current attorney is?
Who's current attorney?
Bridgeford House?
I have no idea. I do not know.
Susan?
Just, Anne, I know this has been a long process, and I don't think that the intent of the ordinance was to single out businesses on Spring Street. You can agree with me or you can disagree with me, it doesn't matter to me. But one of the recommendations in the 2022 parking survey, which I have a whole thing here. So if anybody ever wants a copy of it, I've got a copy of it. We can certainly make copies for each of you. But one of the residential parking recommendations, this was done for Mountain, Elk, Owen, Spring, and Pine, was that for tourist lodgings, B&Bs and multifamily dwellings without adequate off-street parking, the city could provide a set of number of hang tags, difference between required parking and available parking for vehicles to identify them as visitors. So the item of tourist lodgings and B&Bs that didn't have adequate parking was addressed and was discussed in the original survey. And I'm sure it was based on the number of available parking places and also the legally non-conformings. So I know that Kyle sent some information out, and one of the things is being a good neighbor. You know, I think if any of you had a business on Spring Street and all of a sudden you say, okay, I've got a legally non-conforming, it states here I don't have any parking, or it states I have this number of parking. I think each and every one of us would be very upset if the city came in and said, okay, you can't do that anymore. Like I said at our, at the last city council meeting that I addressed Spring Street or illegally non-conforming property, when those properties sell, and some of them may, they may become residential, we have ours for sale right now, and part of it is being sold or offered as residential. So it may go away on even our street as far as us having a bed and breakfast. It may go back to residential. When that happens, then the city can go ahead and go in and say, okay, that legally non-conforming is no longer viable because it's a residence and there is adequate parking for that. So I'm not sure still how we got from, this is our recommendation, to be fair to neighbors and to be kind and be good citizens to each other, to where we are today. I sent a, an email to Ida and said there are a couple, that I think there are a couple options. You know, maybe it's just leaving the signs up and saying, hey, it's residential and you hope that people abide by it. Maybe there's a combination of hang tags and no hang tags. I don't know. But I still think it comes down to the basics of, do we want to be good neighbors? And do we want to honor the things that have already been offered to these properties? Now, some of them may not be operating legally. I know we've got a couple right now that have CUPs and they're B&Bs, and nobody lives there. So that's an issue, and that's why that moratorium was asked to be extended so we get some of those things straightened out. But, and I'm not going to single out one particular address on Spring Street. I know there's B&B and I know there's tourist lodging. And I know what our book says as far as what they have for parking. You guys all have this in your book as well. So, you know, the original intent, from what I can see on the 2022 survey, was that we would take those properties, their circumstances into account and try to accommodate in the best way we could. So.
Hi, I have just two questions here to clarify because I'm new at this and still trying to get up to speed. Ordinance number 2332 was approved on January 23rd of 2023, establishing the Spring Street residential parking district. That was when it was approved and made into law. And then again, on, oh, 8th day of July of '24, that residential parking district was repealed. So, well, what is this here?
I don't know. We tabled it. This is what we did.
I've got an ordinance number.
No, it was repealed.
It was repealed.
I've got an ordinance, I've got an ordinance number 25, 25, 2353, an ordinance to revoke ordinance 2332, and it says that they revoked it. So this is no longer.
Right. So this conversation is what should be done.
So we're back to where we were before. I didn't mean to be too overzealous there. We are back to where we were the 22nd date of January 2023. Is that correct? Is that correct?
This, this meeting, I thought, was supposed to determine whether or not, to have a discussion as to whether or not a parking district was viable on Spring Street? If everybody wants to still do it.
But there is no residential.
But there is not one right now.
There's not one right now. Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Just like, this is just a, what, remake a new ordinance to address that? Or just because it doesn't, it doesn't exist right now. There is no Spring Street.
But we're trying to come up with some solutions on what to do, if anything.
Okay, but we're back to zero, back to basically, okay, that's what I wanted to know. I didn't know if there was some other progress that was established after this. Because, okay, thank you.
Mayor, when I met with you and Forrest and the chief and Kyle and provided those documents that I had found on Bridgeford House from their show cause hearing in 2001 that showed the diagram of the parking, I never really got any feedback on that of what we needed to do.
Well, I think that was part of the discussion whether or not that was a, that became part where we were on illegally non-conforming, what was being required, what Henry Thornton said he had. And Henry Thornton came up with that parking, if I'm not mistaken, parking diagram.
Well, the, the letter indicated code enforcement was out and inspected it.
I'm sorry, what?
The code enforcement officer at the time, according to these documents that were sent over for the show cause hearing, the code enforcement officer actually on, this was written on February 27th of '01 to Mr. Phil Sin, who was the building inspector. I'm submitting a layout of the parking in the immediate rear of the Bridgeford House, 263 Spring Street. Per your onsite inspection dated 2/26/01, 10:00 a.m., we have a total of eight parking spaces present. Also per our conversation, spaces 1 through 7 existed as of 7/25/97, the date we purchased the Bridgeford House.
Right. Well, that document, I don't know where that, I don't know how or where. The current, the current owners are not using that document. And somehow the planning and the CUP and plan commission never used that document. After, I mean, after, that was in what year?
This was in 2001 that they had to show cause.
2001. So that was 21, two years ago.
Uh huh.
So, you know, we had a lot of water under, over the bridge at that, since that time. And now we're back on to the last four years of having problems with not having park enough parking on residential street, possibly because of the overnight lodging.
Okay.
Now, whether or not that's valid, I don't know. I mean, that's a determination, I guess. Somehow in our ordinance, we document that it's been grandfathered and they've got three.
Yeah, when they, the reality, the reality of it is, we can't do anything about it. But when Henry P. added on, it should have been, it should have been a CUP.
Oh, absolutely.
And we can't do a thing about it.
But it is, and it's, it's a done deal.
Say that again? I missed that.
Which part?
When Henry added on.
When he added on that, of those extra rooms, the grandfather had already done anything, there should never, there should never be another grandfather. That should have been CUPs. He should have applied and come for a CUP. And somehow the attorneys got involved in it, grandfathered. And it's just speculation on my part, but that's where this parking came from.
But in 2001?
In 2001.
And that's when they submitted this drawing?
Correct. And there was a show cause hearing and the two things from, I can gather from the tape, one was the parking, and the other was that he had to sign a notarized statement that he lived in the house.
Okay, so then what happened was that he was approved based on this parking plan?
And it never got changed in code. It went, it didn't go from three parking spaces to seven parking spaces.
It still is acknowledged as being legally non-conforming.
Can it be, I mean, I realize it can't be postdated, but can it be corrected?
That was my question.
Well, yeah, I would think so. There's no substance.
According to Forrest, no. We spoke about that last meeting.
Let's wait till Forrest says something.
He did last meeting.
Yeah, right now, the book, right now, our book on zoning districts, it says on Appendix A, it says the following bed and breakfast and tourist lodgings in R1 and R2 zones, which have been in business prior to September 1986 and are still in business at this time, are considered as legally non-conforming. So that's what's in our book right now. So '86 would precede 2001, but at the same time, if there were changes, nothing ever was recorded in code.
And that would be because the city clerk never got it processed, I would assume. I personally think it's a question, not for Forrest, but for the municipal league. I think they need to be asked. And, and, you know, can this be, can we go back and enter this into the book and enforce it? You know, and find out for sure.
And then also, if you're going to ask municipally, ask what the legal ramifications would be for somebody purchasing a property under false pretenses.
I didn't hear, ask one of them?
I said I would ask them also that, since it wasn't recorded correctly, then somebody has purchased that property, obviously. We have people that are, have purchased that property at 263 Spring Street under false pretenses, as in what they believed was allowed per city code. So does that cause us a legal issue because it was never changed and they purchased it under the assumption of what's in our code book?
I would think. They probably won't answer that one because that's, I think that's a personal property issue.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so.
That's not a city issue. I'm just guessing.
No, I understand. I'm just saying that that would be a circumstance that we would have to, or that the city would have to deal with if.
Let me ask this question. When it was transferred from Thornton's to the next buyer, next owner, it had to get a conditional use permit?
Not a grandfather. That doesn't come to planning. And I'm not really seeing.
Well, I always thought they all had to come.
The grandfathers don't. Which I personally think is a, is an issue because there doesn't seem to be an orientation of what expectations are, what parking is. I think that that's very important. And another thing just to throw out here, we weren't telling people they couldn't park on Spring Street. We were just telling people, you have to go down the street across, I think it's the Rosalie.
There's more?
That's like at the Fuller House and park there.
The issue, the problem is that our ordinance doesn't, it just says that you have to have off-street parking. It doesn't say that you have to use it.
Right.
And that's the point I made at the last city, or the city council meeting, the last time we talked about this. That this is not enforceable. If I come to town and buy a B&B with three units and I have three off-street parking units that's required, but I have three NT cars, I could park those NT cars in those three spots and tell my guests, park on the street. And there's nothing, nobody can do anything about that. It's not enforceable. So that's what this problem is. It's not picking on Bridgeford House. It's a citywide issue, and we also don't address the multifamily units. If they're required to have off-street parking, but there's nothing that says we have, there's nothing that says it's enforceable, then those people can park anywhere they want to park. So, and then someone told me, well, if a, if a B&B does this, then they can have their CUP revoked. Is that true? Is that some way of regulating it or consequences? But who, who goes and checks up on that and says, oh, you know, this person's, B&B's not, not making their guests park in their spots, therefore don't give them their CUP back someday? Is that even possible?
SWAT team, we sent in the SWAT.
That's a code enforcement. I like that.
Part of the, part of the, the SWAT leader's gone.
My question, don't we have it in code? If there's a modification to one of those non-conformings, it's no longer a non-conforming. Then they have to go through the whole process. It's kind of like what happened with One Washington. You know, they changed the, the shape of the building and therefore they got to go back to the trough and find out if they can get a CUP. It just, it doesn't matter how long it's been. It's not like you get adverse possession against the city. You can't.
I think part of the problem is that the record-keeping does not help this cause. And right now, if, if somebody were to come in and say, you know, what does your code say? They're doing what they're, they're following the code. They have somebody who lives there. They have three places in the back that they use for guests. They've got signs that they give out to their, to their guests saying, you know, in this room, you have to park behind, the other guests park on the street. You know, so, I mean, obviously you've, you've, you've been in lawsuit before. So you understand how that, that rolls.
But the, the good neighbor thing sort of blows up with the way the Bridgeford House has been reacting. Like he comes down there on Friday night and parks his pickup truck in front of the Bridgeford House, and then she comes and she parks in front and she walks down the stairs to go cook breakfast. She could easily park in the back if she was a good neighbor.
You can't depend on good neighbor?
No.
I mean, that's just, forget that.
Well, it's, it's been made a big deal here, and I want to say it, but.
There are, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't know the number, and maybe you do. There are not as many units on that stretch of the street that there used to be, by far. There used to be about three, four times that many.
There's not. There's the Bridgeford House, and I believe it's the Bodie House. There's only two on Spring Street now.
And so.
Now, that's, now, that's tourist lodging. That's not your multifamilies.
Right. That's not multifamily.
So right now, we have 247 Spring, we've got 256 Spring, and we've got 263 Spring.
There's only one left tourist lodging. I don't.
So this code needs to be updated, too?
Yeah, that's wrong, too.
But a tourist lodging is an individual structure, right?
Yeah, you don't have to have an owner-manager there at all.
But they also are indicated in our book that they have one unit and they have zero parking, and they're legally non-conforming.
Well, then, that's all right. They're not any different than any other house on the street.
Yeah.
So, so it's 247?
I don't know which one it is.
Oh, okay. All right, I'll ask that.
Susan or Anne, can you, I think part of the issue, I remember when we started looking at this, was we're going to change the enforcement to require overnight lodging to use their off-street parking. Was that ever implemented?
No. It may be that what we need to do before we can move forward is do an ordinance on multifamily and legal non-conforming properties on parking.
What do you guys think?
Well, thank you. Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think we've got a pothole here that we got to fill first. And that has to do with the current enforceability structure with the B&Bs. And part of that is, like the mayor said, enforcing the fact that they have to use their parking, that they have to have as part of their approval of the structure, of the business. If they have parking, they need to use it. Right, they need to use it. But right now, there's no. If they don't have any off-street, they can't use it. But if they have. So I think if we get the, I don't know if the current, if, I don't know if you need our recommendation, but you know, if the current city attorney could modify that current ordinance on, on, that we're quoting to add the must-use clause on that, on that ordinance, that would solve the problem. And then we could go forward with establishing parking permits. Because I think a lot of it resides on, you know, if the B&Bs are going to do what they want to do, then, then that's the problem. We need to have an enforceability clause that we can, we can legally do. Anything else, Ryan?
No, I'm just still trying to catch up. I mean, the, if the ordinance was revoked for the parking district, before that date, were they, were allowed to have every resident on that street? Or, well, that was just for Spring Street. Throughout the city, allowed two parking spaces in front of their, no. So there is no parking regulations or laws before that Spring Street?
There's no assigned parking either.
Okay, so now, since that's been repealed, there are no longer assigned, now, right now, there are no.
There never was assigned parking.
Say that again?
There never was assigned parking.
Okay, but you're allowed two spots in front of your business?
But it wasn't assigned.
Okay.
In other words, you don't, not everybody, there's no guarantee you get to park in front of your head.
Anybody could park there. Didn't matter if you had two cars or three cars or four cars or five cars.
But aren't there signs out there now that said this spot reserved for this?
No, it's just residential. It just says residential parking only.
Okay.
So those signs.
I went over there and looked at it. That's why, I mean, I took pictures of it and everything. I just, yeah, I just didn't know, since the, since the ordinance has been repealed, nothing of the Spring Street parking is in effect right now. So it's basically back to where it was, but it's residence parking only, but it's not established as two per house. It's just wide open.
Correct.
Yeah, so somebody can park in front of one house and, you know, live down the street or somewhere else. Okay.
Susan?
One of the items that I had put on my list was, you know, I mean, we could talk about this for hours. Is there any opportunity for us to poll the neighborhood and say, do you or don't you want it? I mean, because really, maybe they don't want it anymore. I don't know. I mean, I mean, I think that that would be a, a good first start. I know we said we had some issues with people being out of town or owning those properties. Maybe some of that's changed. I don't know. But, you know, does it make sense to go ahead and poll the neighborhood and just say, do you want it or don't you want it? And maybe that solves the problem. Maybe they'll say they don't want it. So why go through the mechanics of how many conversations and attorney fees to, although I know he's on salary, to, to do it?
But it just doesn't impact Spring Street. We have, we have issues on Pine Street. We have issues on Elk Street. The idea was to do a pilot, knowing that probably there would be some adjustments, and then maybe try it somewhere else, and we just really never got off the ground.
I've got a little, I took a picture of the sign on the door of the Bridgeford House. And it says, parking is permitted, off-street parking is permitted, residential parking only. Feel free to unload your car, but then please move your car to the provided rear parking area. If you are staying in the Nottinghamshire, Nottinghamshire suite or Staffordshire room, you will find a guest pass for street parking in your room because planning gave out two guest passes. So probably two guest passes, and if the owner's parked in the back, boom, problem solved.
I actually have those signs, too, that she has given us. So if anybody wants a copy of the survey or any of this, we can certainly make copies for you. But, you know, the question is, what do you want to do?
Well, you may have a point. What's the committee here think about the polling the neighborhood?
Terry's got a question.
Well, my opinion on polling the neighborhood, it's all fine and good. And, but if they still want it, that doesn't mean we're still going to be able to provide it. I mean, I just don't know. And I, and I think that your city attorney, you're going to find that, that he doesn't, he's not going to want to, and I hope I'm wrong, but I don't think he is going to feel he can write something to make them park around back to a stick. I don't think. That's just my opinion. You know, where he, where you can make them park back there or find them somehow or something, you know. I just don't know that there is a mechanism to make that work.
Yeah, I could, Terry, I mean, one of the things that we did have while I was on planning so far is we did have a business owner requesting a renewal of a cup because the neighbors had showed up and they complained that these, this people weren't conforming. And I think it was as simple as they weren't picking up the dog poo. I mean, it sounds silly simple, but they didn't get their license. So there is a mechanism for enforcement, and it has to do with that review period when they renew for their license. But again, you know, there's got to be some teeth in the thing.
Well, if the Bridgeford House is grandfathered, you can't do that to them anyway.
Well, I think that, that if, still, we're not changing the grandfather. We're saying that they're required to park in the back. We're not changing the status of the, of their business license. We're only saying that adding that verbiage that's already exists, that we're pointing out, I mean. that adding that verbiage that's already exists, that we're pointing out, I mean, we're, we're clarifying, I guess is the word I'm using, we're clarifying the ordinance.
The problem...
If it doesn't have any teeth to it, they're not gonna do it.
Well, it's got teeth, but the problem is, well, doesn't, doesn't, is how do you enforce that without some sort of mechanism, uh, noting who is, uh, an occupant spending the night there versus a resident?
Right.
If you don't have some sort of a hang tag. Otherwise, we don't know who's the...
And I think, I think, again, like I said with the original survey, that was the recommendation, is that they would, whoever, whoever didn't have parking on this, in the back, when it comes to the businesses there, and I'm talking about bed and breakfast, I'm talking about tourist lodging, that the recommendation is that they would have hang tags. I know in the original, um, ordinance, it was, what, $25 if they lost their hang tag and they, if they had to go down to City Hall and get a new one, they, so it was the responsibility of the property owner to get that back from that guest when they checked out, and if they didn't, they could go back down to City Hall and get, pay $25 for a new one, or charge that guest for that $25. So there was a mechanism in place to, to do that. But again, does the neighborhood want it? And do you all want to spend all those hours doing it if they don't want it?
Susan, I think it's a, a really good idea to repoll that, that street and find out if they still want this, uh, 'cause the last one you said was 2022?
It was 2022.
Yeah. And I mean, if they don't want it, then we're just gonna keep spinning our wheels like we have been.
And I know one of the other things that was mentioned in here, and we've talked about it for years, is striping that corner down around the backside.
That's, that's not a problem, I mean, let's not worry about that, we'll get that taken care of.
Well, I'm just saying, if you look at the survey, it, it does mention how many spaces are available and how many people are there.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm saying we're getting that taken care of. That's on the list of things to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think one of the questions that was asked at city council meeting was, do we even know how many spaces are available down there? So, I just brought that up because...
It really doesn't matter, it is what it is. I mean, whether we got 10, or we got 12, it's what it is, but we are gonna get them stripped.
Okay.
I have a question about the CUPs. Are they, do they come up for renewal periodically, or is it, once they get it, they got it forever?
CUPs generally are transferable. I think if there were, there was a show cause, um, because maybe they were a bad neighbor or they weren't running their business the way they were supposed to, then they would come before planning, and then a decision could be made.
How would that happen, that they come before planning? Someone filed a complaint or something?
I guess if enough people sent a letter in and complained.
Yeah, enough people, um, sent a letter in and complained about it, we could do a show cause hearing. You know, I'll just give you an example, the Bridgeford House, let's say that, let's say that the, the parking thing is a valid thing in the back, and they don't do it. We could bring them in for a show cause, and we could say, "All right, you say you only have three parking spaces in the back, so we're gonna drop you from five units to one, so you have one space for your guests, and you have two for the owner-manager." Well, down the road, should they decide that they want to clean up the parking in the back so they can have those four units, they can't come back and get a grandfather. They would actually have to apply for a CUP, and then all the letters would have to be sent out to the neighbors. If it were me, I wouldn't bet on getting a CUP.
I wonder if it wouldn't be better if CUPs expired every two years, or they have to come back, get their CUP renewed, give the neighbors the opportunities to come in and testify.
I don't think you can do that on a grandfather. It's not, this isn't a CUP. This is, this is a grandfather. So, they don't, they never come before planning when they're transferred. The only way they would come to us is if somebody makes a complaint, and we would bring them in for show cause.
Now, that could be changed, as far as the grandfathers, the code could be changed that says regardless of whether or not they're a grandfather, they, they have to still go before planning when they change owners.
I like that idea.
I mean, that's an easy fix.
It makes them, it makes them responsible to their neighbors, and the neighbors are watching them, and in two years, they could come, send a letter to the planning, or come to the planning and say, "This is not a good neighbor, this has been the problem, they're not using their parking properly, they're not doing something properly."
Yeah, the problem is, if it's still a grandfather, there's only...
It's only on the grandfather, but not on the, the existing.
But I still think the grandfather should come before planning, just so they're aware of what is required of them.
I still don't understand why it's grandfathered, if they've added units to the grandfathered unit.
Because they got attorneys involved, Terry. You know, it, we, we cannot change that. You know, we can ask about the parking, but we, you can't go back and say, "This can't be a grandfather after 23 years." That, that's not gonna work.
Can, can, okay, so legally non-conforming transfers, if you don't have any changes, that's transferable. CUPs are not transferable, you have to apply for a continuance, so you can get denied, the next owner can get denied for a CUP. Before they buy that property, they can apply for a CUP, and the, the approval can be a condition of their closing, but legal non-conforming, they don't have to go to any hearing unless it's a show cause, where we think that their B&amp;B is not serving breakfast, or, um, they're advertising as something other than a bed and breakfast, or something like that. They, they can go to a show cause, but legal non-conformings don't have to go to any, any kind of hearing or any type of transfer process unless they're changing the number of units, if that makes more sense.
But it can be taken away if it becomes a residence, and it's no longer a business. It could be, it, it can be legally changed within our code to show that this is no longer a B&amp;B or a tourist lodging or whatever, it comes off the list, and then that is the record that says that legally non-conforming is gone.
And I'm not sure we've even updated that list.
Well, we just had one that we need to look at. I said, Ann and I just were talking about one on Spring Street that we need to review and check, too, so...
Historically, I have never known a CUP that, as long as that business has, I'm talking about lodging, as long as it's been in business and hasn't been interrupted, I've never known one to be turned down.
I did.
Except what I just heard about one because their dog used the neighbor's yard for a bathroom, and you turned it down for that reason?
I don't remember that one at all.
Yeah, no, there was a complaint, I can't remember, it was a complaint, and it was a, there was a, we had a lot, we had 20% of the 200 feet that said no, really didn't want it, but yeah, I can't remember the name of it.
Yeah, if, in our code, if 20% of the neighbors who received the letters that are within that 200 feet say they don't want it, then as a planning commission, we can decide to give or not give based on...
On a renewal.
Yes, but then they also can appeal to city council, though.
As a Realtor, I, whenever I sold one of those properties, it was always put in the con, contract contingent upon getting the CUP transferred. And whether all Realtors do that, I cannot say, but they should be, and get that approval before they, you know, proceed to close.
We did.
Yeah.
I think most do.
That's what you should do.
Right.
But I've never, in all my days until now, known one to not pass muster, and I'm real surprised that they didn't take it in court over that one, because...
She said Virgil Fowler's.
Pardon me?
Uh, Virgil Fowler.
Virgil?
Yes, his was turned down, and that was maybe, what, three years ago?
Well, yeah, we turned, we turned that one down.
But that was a new, right?
Well, no, she, the gal, didn't seem to realize it was a bed and breakfast.
Oh, okay.
She had been, after Virgil passed away, she ran it as a tourist lodging, and I don't remember exactly whether she wanted to sell it, and then when she came for the, um, approvals, she came as a tourist lodging, and there is no, there hasn't been tourist lodging in our one.
No, it's not.
Since 2001, so, I, I mean, I, there's a couple that we've turned down, uh, we turned down one on East Mountain because the couple, the, the neighbors didn't want it, um, and then they ran it illegally, um, but they are finally gone.
There was one on Elk, um, that we turned down as a planning commission, but then they brought it to city council and it was passed. So there are some circumstance, or some instances like that, 'cause they can appeal to city council. So, they may still get it if that happens, but, you know, it's not that often.
Well, my question is, what does planning recommend to us?
I know what I recommend, but what do you, what do you think, Tom? What do you think, Mike?
Well, I'm sure kind of the, the, the legal issues of enforcement, even if you send the letters out and then people say, "Well, sure, we want to keep it like this," I believe, I don't want to throw the police chief under the bus, but I thought he got up there and instead that they're not gonna sit around all day in front of those parking spots, you know, monitoring those people and running tickets for them, they got other things to do. So, I mean, if you, enforcement, if you, if you make it so it, it has to be a, a law, and the police are required to enforce it, you're putting a big burden on them just to compensate for a couple of people's parking spots. If there's no, I just, I was looking through here, and I mean, I'm still new, I see a lot of, uh, things for, for parking permits for single-family dwellings, when it says residence, residential parking in, on the curb, that's for a resident of that address, there's not, or in that district, that's not a guest. I don't see guest parking anywhere. So, I mean, legally, a guest can't, if you're, if you're my guest, you really can't legally park in that spot. I mean, you can park and take the risk of every other tourist, but I mean, as far as a residence goes, residential parking is for the legal resident of that area, or the city of Eureka Springs, I would say. But if my, if my six buddies come from, uh, Missouri, I can't put two of them in each one of those spots and say they're all my friends, like they get to get them, guest parking is, I mean, residential parking is for a legal resident, I guess of Eureka Springs. So, if you pass it so you can give extra parking for extra friends, well, then the neighbor calls and say, "Hey, this guy's got Wisconsin plates on his car, I know he doesn't live there, I called the police," and the police have to come out there, hunt down that, you know, find that thing, but I don't think there, I don't think, my recommendation is to be no rec, uh, deviation from the residential parking only. As, you can't have guest, guest parking in your parking spot just because it's yours, it has to be yours. That way the police can just, if they get a call, they look at the tag, goes to that house, that's legally parked. If they have another parking spot with a cat, car from Wisconsin, they bring it up, guy lives in Wisconsin, and they get a ticket for not, for parking in a residential parking zone. There shouldn't be an exemption for guests, it should be just strict residential parking only. That's my recommendation.
Terry?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go to you.
I personally, I mean, and that's fine, you know, you can, you can do all that you want to, but I think it's an undue responsibility, an unfair responsibility, or a, not a responsible usage of your police to monitor that parking on Spring Street.
I don't, I don't think it was ever intended to be a 24/7 thing. This was to be late in the evening, on the weekends, um, I certainly wouldn't consider it a good source of resources to have them go up and down the street, you know, all day long. I do believe if the multifamilies and the Bridgeford House would park in the back, we wouldn't have this problem.
I'm not gonna argue that, but if you don't think you can make them utilize six spaces or seven spaces or more than three in the back, you're not gonna fix any.
I think multifamily is pretty much parking back in the back for monitor, who told me that. And I know when I went back there, and I'm sure we all did, uh, from the Bridgeford House, there's parking back there, you know, it may not be completely legal, uh, in fact, completing the parking requirement spaces and stuff, but there's still parking. But, then let's ask the municipal league if we can pass an ordinance that says if you've got parking, off-street parking, you have to use it if you're bed and breakfast, or if you're nightly rental, or if you're... That's probably, I'm sure they're gonna say yes. The question is, how do you enforce it?
Yeah, how do you identify who's supposed to park on the street?
Identify who's supposed to be parking, yeah, exactly. And that's where we came up with permits and the tags. Yeah, and I, the permits and, the permits are the way to go. I still think.
That's for off-street parking, correct?
Permits for street parking.
And for me, I think the short term, uh, is going back to just quick, do a resurvey of the area in that district, that parking district area, and get a feedback of the current residents and if they still want to do it.
So, are you recommending a mailed survey?
Yeah, yeah, some kind of, yeah.
Okay, so just re, just remember that two years ago, and I don't know, it could've changed, only 10 people on Spring Street actually lived on Spring Street, or that's where they got their mail. And that's maybe why we only got 10 responses on the survey.
I think it's gonna start to be a hand to door-to-door if you really want to do it.
They don't live, they don't live here anyway.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe if they don't have an Arkansas tag, that we charge them a good sum for that permit.
It's the county data, though, that we get those addresses from, so their accountant might live in Missouri or whatever, and they have their mail go there. I know there's some people that do that, they have their, if you look up their address certified with the county, and you look at it to the accounting firm, that's just an idea out, to throw out there.
Well, where are we, and what do we want to do?
I'd like to hear back from the municipal league on that document in 2001, and then maybe we need to look at doing an ordinance on the legal non-conforming before we move forward with any type of parking thing. 'Cause if we don't have anything that has any meat in it, then there's really no reason to keep spending time doing this.
And the municipal league, what we're wanting to do is see if there's any way we can go back on illegal non-conforming property that was changed.
Yeah.
To enforce the conditions that it was prior to being changed.
How many people have owned it since then? Three, two?
I, I don't know, I mean, I know two. I know that the last two, from my understanding and talking to the neighborhood, are the only two that they had problems with because everybody else parked in the back. But I know that the previous owner parked in the front 'cause he parked his RV in the back into the spot, so I, I don't know the answer.
No, he was a problem, I heard, I heard that, too.
And he probably should have been brought in for show cause a long time ago, but he wasn't, so we, you know, we go forward.
Well, it was added on to, should be more than...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
That was the big time, yeah.
For whatever reason, it wasn't...
Yeah, I don't want to see the, the law there's getting a mess with us, but they have the space. They own a lot of property back there.
As, as, as it stands right now, the Bridgeford House has, uh, hang tags or something for three on-street parkings, or what do they have right now?
Well, they don't need anything right now.
Yeah, hand tags, they're...
I thought they were, they weren't, they weren't issued, they weren't issued?
They're moved, they're off the...
Yeah, but they weren't issued. Okay, so right now, they don't have any special, okay, that's all I needed, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Now, the last time I talked to the Bridgeford House, they said if they got two hand tags, they would be happy, and they would make everybody else park in the back.
And I'm sure the people on Spring Street that have zero parking would be happy to have that, too. So, well, hopefully we can come to some kind of decision.
So, just for clarification, are you wanting to eliminate legal non-conforming altogether? The, the required off-street parking and say that they have to park off-street? Or are you wanting to enforce the current legal non-conforming?
Enforce the current.
The current, so like, for example...
I don't know any, I don't know either, honestly, of any grandfathered bed and breakfast that doesn't have parking.
In town?
In town.
Except here.
Except here. I mean, we've got tourist lodging on Pine and Spring that I know don't have parking, but as far as a bed and breakfast, I don't know of any bed and breakfast we have in town that does not have parking.
I know there's one on Douglas that has zero.
Oh, there's one, um...
There's, there's a few that, um...
Doesn't Hidden Springs park on the street, too?
He's got, I don't know, I mean, he's... He's got, I don't know. I mean, he's, I've never heard a complaint.
I think he pulls off to the side of the road.
But, but, I mean, all the legal non-conformings and the multifamilies, if they're grandfathered in with parking, they need to utilize the parking.
Because according to code, if they have a bed and breakfast, they're required to have parking, one space per unit plus two spaces for owner-manager. So if they have three off-street parking spaces, then they would park... If, if they had five units, three off-street parking spaces, according to code right now, they would have four on-street.
That's something. Read that again. I don't, I didn't read that one.
So let's say you have three units. You're required to provide three parking spaces for those units plus have two parking spaces for owner and managers. So that would mean if you were grandfathered, if you were grandfathered to require three off-street parking spaces, you still would need two on-street parking spaces for owner-manager, according to code currently.
I saw that too. Saw the same thing. They have five units, they're only allowed three parking spaces, but they're required to have one for each unit plus two for the residents. That's seven total. So if they're required now to have appendix A of 10.
But they're, but they're only registered in the book as three off-street parking spaces, so...
That's why I'm saying that I think that when this document was done in 2001, they forgot to change it.
I don't know.
And whether or not that can be modified, I have no idea. That's my question.
What do you think, Mr. Beuber?
Maybe a statute of limitations.
Huh?
Maybe a statute of limitations, probably too.
There could be that.
More than 10 years.
I'll ask, I'm pretty much sure, I think I've talked to him about something similar. I think something, the planning commission come up. It's difficult to go back and make something retroactive. So without having some sort of, you know, what Ann was saying, that was done by an oversight and having proof of that, we don't know. But the amendments, I'm sure the group's not... Amendments for the planning commission, I'm sure, are sparse.
But I, I, we, we do need to do something for the future.
What?
We do need to do something for the future to, on these multifamilies and this on the parking situation.
Certainly on the grandfathers. You know, we need to have a process in place where they can at least be reviewed or...
It's a grandfather that's causing the problem.
I know. And you know, I'll, I'll get with Kyle on these, these, these three addresses on Spring Street because I know Ann thinks that one of the tourist lodging that's in the book is no longer. It might be a residence. And we have one on our street too, or up where I live, that's a grandfather that isn't currently operating. And they've got six months to decide. At least that's how I read the ordinances. They have six months, 180 days before it goes away if they haven't paid any CABC taxes, they don't have a business license whatsoever. So I have that on one of my tickers in my calendar to make sure that that letter is sent out saying that that grandfather is completely gone, that they're notified if they do nothing over this next month. And then that will have to be updated in our codebook as well. But it's hard for us to remember those. Like, how do you, how do you know? Like, you know, how, how do we keep track of those types of things? Unless it is, in this particular instance, on lodgings and licenses that are issued by planning or are a part of the planning process, unless we change the ordinance to say that a legally non-conforming or grandfathered property, whatever the reason is, has to come before planning when it transfers. And that would be just a change in the ordinance, but at least there would be a record of it going forward when those properties change hands, as far as owners go.
I also believe that if the municipal league says you can't go back retroactively, that you can probably change it to where before it's transferred, where they, they have to comply with, as it's written. Not saying that they, they're gonna lose it, but unless they, you know, they got five units, if they wanna sell that place, they're gonna have to...
Make sure that there's a...
Make sure that they have the five spots in, in the back.
And make sure that they, that we verify, that they understand what they're buying.
That's right. And they have to be, you know, I think you can probably put some teeth into it that way. Because that's how many units had, you know, it was an oversight, it didn't get put in. If the municipal league says, "No, you can't go back on it," say, "Well, it was done and we can, here's a verification of, of it being done. It just was, was inadvertently left out of our codebook." And so, you know, if you wanna sell it down the road as a bed and breakfast, you better have your parking in order.
I got one more point. I, what was the other code? I got the 14.08 that calls for five units and three spaces. What was the other one that said, what code was it for five? One, one for each unit and then two for the...
Should be in your book on the parking requirements.
The ones you were, the two you were...
Wait, so the one that lists how many parking spaces are required for each one? Let me, sorry, I closed out of it.
The reason I'm saying, the reason I'm bringing this point is you've got two conflicting codes here. One code said that using 263 Spring Street, they have five units. They're only allotted three parking spaces. But the other code says that for bed and breakfast, you're supposed to have one parking space for each unit plus two parking spaces, which is seven. Those two conflict. You need to say one of the two.
Probably because they got a variance. So you remember how we gave variant, we did a couple variances?
But then, no, those aren't, these aren't, those are not variances. She's not quoting variants. She's quoting the code.
Because it was a grandfather. And at the time, I don't, it lets, I think it had three, four units. It was grandfathered in. Then it was added on to. The attorneys got involved and instead of a CUP, they grandfathered those additional rooms.
So right, as it stands right now, for 263 Spring Street, a type of a bed and breakfast, they have five units. How many parking spaces are they allotted?
The book says, it, it has nothing to do with allowed. It book says that they have three.
Says there, you're supposed to have one each. Well, that, the other, but the other code says you're supposed to have one for each unit and what, two for the...
That, that's for non-grandfathered.
That's non-grand, okay.
The answer to your question is seven, seven spaces.
Yeah, okay, that's the one.
Now, what happened, and I think they originally had three units.
Okay.
So they were grandfathered with three parking spaces plus the two that could park off-street for the owner.
Okay.
The owner, I think Henry, at that time, added two units to that building.
Okay, so it goes back to changing that from none.
Went from three to five.
Okay.
Whether he ever got a permission, I don't know how that went.
There's a lot of stuff, there's a lot of stock orders in the file.
Did, did, did he?
Well, you're right, because he came back and he says on his map, he can provide eight spaces.
Because in 2005, they were...
Okay, there you go, yeah.
Now, at that time, he should've lost his non-conforming. And it should've been stuck with...
They didn't tell me this.
Okay. But somewhere through there, it never got changed grandfathered. So he's still back acting as if there's only five units there.
Okay. And then also in, in...
Okay, thank you.
Also in code for that property, that property went from, and I, and I gave you all a packet last time. That property went from four units to five units in 2012.
Who did, who did, who was the mayor?
Uh, I can't, I don't, I can't remember. Was it Pa, I think maybe Pete, maybe Pete? Do you have, you don't have that paperwork with you? Nobody has it with them?
Which one?
The one I gave at the city council meeting that had the information about what is a non-conforming and, and there was an ordinance in there that I copied from 2012. Yeah, but there's a paper in there, an ordinance for 2000, from 2012 for that, for 263 Spring Street.
This one?
Nope. It's an ordinance, Terry, not a...
Oh, it's the ordinance?
Yeah, they went from four units to five in 2012. So there's other dates out there. And if I need to make another copy of it, I can certainly do that for you all as well. But again, I think it goes back to municipal league.
I brought all that. I might've had it all here. This?
It's an ordinance, Terry. I'll, I'll have to find it, if it, if it even matters at this point.
So do we wanna set another workshop or wait till we hear from municipal league or what?
Well, I got a couple of questions I can ask municipal league and see if I can get some answers back. Anything else that the commission or this committee wants to do beforehand?
What are your questions to municipal league again?
Well, I'm gonna ask if...
2309?
About whether the non-conforming, illegal non-conforming can be modified.
Is it that from 2012?
2021.
Okay, there's another one in there, 2012. I, I'm pretty sure it was William, is it Wil, was it William Pay? William Pay? Paint. What was his first name?
Morris.
Morris Pay.
Morris Pay. I don't know why I'm... Wasn't he a mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, 2000. Morris was in 2012.
Okay, does it say they went from four units to five? Does it say they went from four units to five at that address?
No. The number of units for 263 Spring Street is hereby changed from four units to five units.
2012, correct?
Pardon me?
It's 2012, yeah. Yep. So...
That was the mayor. He was signing the order.
He was mayor, yeah. Yeah, it's an ordinance.
But he wasn't the owner.
No, 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 it was signed, it was signed by Ann and Ann as an ordinance where they were... But they changed it.
Sounds like it. I mean, that's what I had found in our code.
He was at 2012.
2012, yeah.
What a mess.
Do you need a copy of that, Butch, though, so when you talk to municipal league? Yeah, did you get one? Okay.
Do you have an extra copy?
Kim has it all scanned in.
Okay.
I wanna guard this stuff with my life.
Anything else? I'd say we ask it out of the box. All right, well, I'll go ahead and I'll get Kim to set up another meeting. We'll talk to municipal league.
Could you have the police chief come to the next meeting? Ask the police chief to come to the next meeting? I, I'm, you know, don't really know where this is gonna go, but I think since he's the one that's gonna enforce it, we need to really hear from him.
If, if we wanna go back and revise that ordinance, there's obviously some issues that we've gone through that need to be changed in the ordinance. One of it's the enforcement, I mean, enforcement, the issue of the, the tags and all that, so... The police can't issue, and issue citations. No conflict. But planning, Kyle can take care of it, issue the permits.
They, they can get them from Hart's, same place he hit the yellow bag.
Same cost.
Well, the only probably...
I mean, why are you talking about it? Would you make that motion at the...
Yeah, yeah. You know I will.
I know you will. All right. All right.